That will be. That will take place at five o'clock to allow for the. Enough time to make sure that happens so that council doesn't start too late. And just for the webinar recording, we have a quorum of the committee. With council members Wood, Hussein, Jackson, Dunbar, and Spatafor present. All right, Mr. Vice President, next item is the minutes from May 17.
Sure, I would move the minutes as presented.
Minutes have been moved. Is there any discussion or agenda to the minutes? Hearing none, Sherry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
I do not see councilmember Betz yet, so motion carries five, yes.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment on agenda items. Members of the public wishing to address the committee on the items listed on their presentations or discussions may do so by raising their virtual hands. You'll have three minutes to comment. Raising your hand is done with a. Option Y on a Mac, Alt-Y on a PC, and star nine if you've dialed in on your phone. Using other apps, there is a raise hand button somewhere on your device. So I will close the committee. Public input. At either three minutes in or after a certain period of awkward silence waiting for hands to go up. All right, I do not see any public comments, so some nodding heads from the committee, if we could move on, looks good to me, okay. We're gonna move on then to our presentations, and our first presentation comes from our chief strategy officer, Judy Killer, who I know is here, I think just got moved into the. Yep, there she is. She has a presentation for us and. I'm blanking on the other person that's joining her, and I apologize for that, but Sherry knows it, so I will.
Greg Stumpf from Boomer.
There we go.
I'll keep an eye out for Greg.
Ms. Killer, the floor is yours.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm just going to make a few comments, and then after I read Greg's bio, I'm going to pass it on to Greg because you all have heard me speak quite a bit on OPEB and the pension, and so I invited Greg tonight because he's our expert, and I really would love for you to hear from him. So just for my opening comments, I just want to say that, as many of you know, that this is my second time working for the city. And during my five and a half year tenure, I've served on the City of Lansing Retirement Boards for approximately four and a half to five and a half of the years. My first time around as a board member, we didn't have the record keeping and the microscopic evaluations that we have today on our systems. And this is primarily because the legislature passed PA 202 back in 2017. So with the passage of PA 202, it was primarily done to protect the local government retirement and the defined benefit systems that were at the time deemed to be grossly underfunded according to GAZB, General Accounting Standard Boards. Governmental, excuse me, accounting standard boards. So with the city, approximately 10 years ago, the city retirement boards hired Boomer Shine Consulting Group to provide actuarial and consulting services. Greg Stumpf is the chief actuary of Boomer Shine, and he works directly with the board, and Karen Williams, our legislative, not legislative, excuse me, our retirement analyst and myself. So throughout the OPEB discussions, we've referenced the infamous Siegel reports, and I mention this to you because the reports were actually calculated utilizing Greg's actuarial numbers. So I thought it was important to bring the person here that has really provided a strong basis for our valuations and looking at OPEB. So right now, I'd like to take a few minutes, and I would like to go over his bio with you, just so that you know the expertise and the level of professionalism that we are working with here. As I mentioned before, Greg Stumpf is the chief actuary at Boomer Shine Consulting Group. He is an experienced pension actuary specializing in public sector defined benefit and retiree healthcare plans. Greg is a fellow of the Society of Actuaries and enrolled actuary and a fellow of the Conference of Consulting Actuaries and a member of the American Academy of Actuaries. Greg specializes in public sector defined benefit and retiree healthcare plans. He is also a member of the Public Plans Committee, which is a leadership group of the Conference of Consulting Actuaries and both the health and pension sections of the Society of Actuaries. Greg is an expert on pension cost, funding projections, and benefit design, focusing primarily on the risks faced by public pension and retiree healthcare systems. Again, I've invited Greg here because I would like for him to inform and update council. At this moment, I would like to pass this on to Greg.
Thank you. Greg is not here yet.
Yeah, so I see a David Boomer Shine, though. Is that?
That's the one you would probably want to use.
Hey, let's bring that person in.
And I also see that Mr. Betz is here, that needs to be brought over as well.
He's on his way in right now.
Okay.
Here's Greg.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't a participant at first, so I wasn't able to rename myself, that's something. Thanks for the introductions, Judy, and. I am Greg Stumpf. I've been doing this type of work for about 20 years, mostly public systems, working with the city for about 10 years. And I am, I'm not here to propose anything to you. I'm not here to sell anything to you. I'm just here to provide some background and important information about the retired healthcare and pension systems there for the city. And it is, I have a good amount of material, maybe close to an hour's worth, but I think it will be very helpful for you. That said, if you have questions while I'm going, you know, you don't have to wait the whole hour to ask a question. If you have a question, please ask. I would be more than happy to answer anything if you go along.
I do have one question. You don't actually think you're gonna take an hour, right?
Usually when I go to city council meetings, you know, I plan for them to say, all right, just get it over with in 10 minutes. If, but you know, if you need to cut me off at some point, that's fine, too.
Before you get started, though, we did have one council member join us, so Brandon, Mr. Betz, if you could please just let, let us know where you're calling in from.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. I am present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you. Greg, continue, please. Sorry about that.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen, and so hopefully you can see a PowerPoint presentation. I'm assuming, okay, I'm assuming that's coming up for everybody. There's 35 slides here, just sort of now right up front. And what I really want to cover today is, in summary, I would say, you know, what's the current status of all the systems? How did we get there? And how do we get to where we are now? And really importantly, where are we going? You know, what's the funding gonna look like five, 10, 20 years from now? And that's something we'll get to towards the end of this. So I'm gonna start with a little background, and then look at the history of the funding and the last valuations, which shows what the current status is. We look at this once a year, these are updated annually. And importantly, the future outlook. So I think it's helpful when you don't deal with pension funding and these types of issues and actuarial calculations every day or even that often, just to understand how it all works. So this first part is just a brief explanation of how our calculations work. So. Actuarial funding is based on accrued benefits. So when somebody starts working for the city and they're put into one of the plans through the police and fire retirement system, they start accruing benefits. There's no assets needed at first because you just hired them. They haven't accrued any benefit yet. But one of the things that we calculate as the actuary is, you know, what's the percentage of pay that should be contributed so that we can fund this person's benefit by the time they retire? So just as an example, 8% of that. It could be a lot higher, a lot lower than that, but this is just an example. So maybe that's $4,000. So we ask to say you put in $4,000 for that person. And by the time they get to the middle of their career, this 8% of pay is likely to stay pretty close to 8%. That number itself doesn't fluctuate a whole lot unless you change the benefit package or there's a major change in assumptions. But it's a higher payroll, and it's a higher pay for this person, so maybe it's 5,500 instead of 4,000 when they started their career. But now we've also accumulated some assets. And we put a number on this and say, all right, well, for this person, let's say they have 15 years of service. The city should have $150,000 in the fund for that person. Then when they get to the end of their career, there is no more annual cost. The benefit is fully accrued because this person is about to retire. We will calculate this number, 400,000, and so that represents a present value of everything that they're expected to be paid out of the fund for the rest of their life. So let's say they have a $3,000 a month benefit, and we expect to earn 7% on the fund for the rest of their life, we discount that back and we say, all right, 400,000. The terms that we use in all of our reports, if you ever get a chance to look at the reports coming from my firm, Boomer Shine Consulting, or any actuarial report, we use these terms. It's about actuarial accrued liability. That's just the assets needed. So when I'd say it's zero here, that's an accrued liability of zero, 150,000, 400,000. That's just what we call it. The annual cost, we call the normal cost. So you hear that term a lot, and you see it a lot in actuarial reports. That's what it means. It's just the cost while somebody's working. When they retire, whether it's fully funded or not, it's zero. So what happens along the way is now let's just take this as three different people. We have a very small three-person pension plan. And if we want to figure out if we have the right amount of assets in there, well, we look at the person we just hired and say, fine, you know, we don't need any, we don't have any. This person, mid-career, maybe we need 150 like that last example, but we only have 55 we can allocate to them because we've allocated a lot here. So there's a shortfall. And maybe the person who just retired, we'd like to allocate 400,000 to him, but we'll only allocate 380. Of course, you know, these are all just examples. So in this case, this three-person plan, we do have a shortfall, not 100% funded, as most plans are not. And so we calculate this cost in two pieces. There's the normal cost, which is 4,000 for this person, 5,000 for this person, plus what we call an amortization of that unfunded liability. It's just a payment to get closer to 100%. So in this example, maybe with that, with that 20,000 plus $95,000 shortfall, we pay a portion of it, 12,000. That's exactly what we do every year for the two retirement systems for the city, except it's not a three-person plan. We have thousands of people in plan. But it's the same concept, exact same calculation. We take every person in the plan, there's a separate calculation, we put them together, and that's your total, and of course, it's in the millions. So the last part of the funding background, and this is important because this is going to lead into the next section of the history of the funding. So what causes or maybe increases their shortfalls? There's a lot of things. There's a list here. It's, at the bottom, it's not an exhaustive list, but it's a pretty comprehensive list. If you have increases in benefits without increased funding, that will cause a shortfall. In other words, if you say, all right, we're just gonna grant everybody a 10% quota. Well, if you don't put additional money into the fund, you just increase the unfunded liability. Contributions less than maintenance amounts. That requires some explanation, and I will do that when we get to slide 12. Well, it's seven right now. Investment returns lower than expected. That's something I think we all understand. If we think we're gonna get 7.5% every year, and the actual return comes in at 0, one year, or negative 1, or 2, anything less than 7.5, that's causing a shortfall. Healthcare costs higher than expected. That's just a higher benefit than we thought. Longer retiree lifetime is unexpected, and this has been a big issue with longer life expectancies and all the mortality research over the past decade. But to the extent people are living longer than we thought, that increases the shortfall. People retiring earlier than we thought, there's less time to fund that benefit, that increases the shortfall, less turnover than expected. That's good, but if you're planning on a certain level of turnover and people just keep staying longer, you have to fund at a higher rate. Higher salary increases than expected. I'll get back to this topic in a little bit, but just think about this while we go over the history of funding. So let me pause at the end of this section, and I'll do it at the end of every section, just to see if there are any questions yet.
Any questions from council members? I see none. Greg, please continue.
Thank you. So this next section, you know, how did we get here? What's the history of the funding? So we'll look at both retirement systems, and we're gonna look at the OPEB funding in a couple slides. So. Here's ERS since 2001. So it's 20 years of history of funding. There's the years across the horizontal axis, the unfunded liabilities in these amounts on the left-hand side corresponding with the red line, and the funding percentage that you, a lot of people like to refer to this, and there's thresholds of reporting requirements for the state, et cetera. That's, that's the funding percentage from 2001 to 2020. So if you understand what all this means, you realize pretty quickly, this is going in the wrong direction. We don't want the funding to go from 90% down to 52%. We don't want the unfunded liability to go from 20 million up to 150 million. But that's what's happened. And if we just look back at our list, we can see a couple of these items. I'll scroll back a couple pages, but. Were there increases in benefits without increased funding? Yes, prior to 2001, there were. Were their investment returns lower than expected? Yeah, in two ways. There were returns in certain years that were lower, plus the expectation used to be 8% return every year. Then it was 7.5, a couple steps down, now it's 7%. So that affected things. But contributions less than the maintenance amount, that was a big factor, too, and I'll go over that in a second. We see a similar picture for, that was ERS. This next one is police and fire. The, just high-level view, it looks the same. The numbers are different. In fact, police-fire system was over 100% for a while, and which means the unfunded liability is negative. But the general pattern of it is about the same. It's dropped from 111% down to 62. And the unfunded liability has gone from negative up to well over 150, 177 million, I believe, most recently. So again, wrong direction, but I will answer the question for you soon, towards the end of this, of, you know, what happens from then on? We see what happened in the past 20 years. Is it gonna keep going up over the next 20 years or not? And that's something I want to answer for you today, and that's probably the most important part of this. So here's the, before I talk about the maintenance contribution, here's the cash flow out of the fund. And I think what I'm telling you today is kind of a mixture of good news and bad news. We, those last two slides, I would categorize under bad news, you know, moving in the wrong direction. This one, I think, comes under the category of good news. The city has put 216 million, actually, it's the city plus the employees. Employees put in a portion of their paycheck, but the city plus employees have put in 216 million over 10 years, both systems combined. But the funds have been able to pay out 493 million. So that's good. I mean, when you think about that, you realize the funds are doing what they are intended to do. They're, they're gonna finance the benefits because if the city had to pay the benefits directly, and there was no pension fund, that would be almost $60 million a year. So getting back to the shortfall issue and what, and this maintenance contribution. I have to give you a little background before I explain this. I started working with the city in 2011, and I identified a problem that had not previously been identified, and that was the unfunded liability not only was growing up to that point, but it was expected to grow indefinitely if the funding policy wasn't changed. And so that leads to this concept of this break-even contribution, or what I call a maintenance contribution. These are my definitions. The concept is out there. I think different actuaries call it different things, but there's this concept of what do you have to do to prevent that unfunded liability from growing, just on a year-to-year basis? So here's, defined again, unfunded liability or shortfall, we call it sometimes. It's just the actual accrued liability, meaning the assets needed, less the actual assets. So to keep that from growing, you have to have a contribution that will include the normal cost, which is reduced per employee contribution, so it's the city portion of the normal cost, plus interest, quote-unquote, interest on the unfunded liability. So if we're assuming a 7% return, and we have an unfunded liability of 100 million, you saw that it was way over that, but just for simplicity, that means you have to contribute at least 7 million just to keep it where it is. And if you keep contributing that 7%, it will just stay where it is. If you contribute more than that amount, that's when it starts to go down. And so what happened after I identified this problem, it was, it was a matter of, okay, can the city just start, you know, adding 4 and 5 million dollars to the budget every year? That just wasn't practical or even possible. So the solution was, we need to get there over time. So between 2011 and now, we've gotten to that point, you'll see here, where we are getting to that maintenance amount. But what happened in those 10 years was that if we went back, and we did, forget this graph, we went back and said, well, what would that maintenance amount, that break-even amount have been each one of those years? And those are in the blue bars. So it would have been 20 million. This is both systems combined. Would have been 20, a little over 20 million in 2011, and the city put in 16 to 17. And you see a similar pattern, you know, the contribution went up, the actual went up most years, the maintenance amount went up. But if you look closely, these are getting closer. So what you see is we're at the point now, where in 2020, the actual contribution is almost equal to the maintenance amount. That is related to the, what's called the amortization period. So there was a 30-year amortization, now it's down to 20. And that's the turning point. This is not news to the pension boards. They know this because we've been talking about it since 2011. I showed these graphs, Carol was there, where it just showed that this unfunded liability is just gonna grow for a while until we get to that turning point. So here's another thing categorized under good news. We're at the turning point. 2021, the red bar will be higher than the blue. So that's good. That means we're gonna turn the corner, and things are going to get better. That's, you know, another, that was number one on the list of what causes shortfalls and a lot of other things contributed. But that certainly was a factor because it's not only the shortfall, you know, how much is the difference between 16 million and 21 million, but it's what would the fund have earned in the 10 years since 2011 if that money was in there? So it's not just a $24 million difference with earnings, maybe it's 40 million, it's close to that. So that's the end of that section for pension. This is kind of a continuation, but on the OPEB side. Any question on the pension stuff so far?
So I, oh, sorry, I see a question from Councilor Jackson, and I have a question. Councilor Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Question, so you said that we're at a turning point this year, and we expect to see the scale shift. What, can you remind me, I know you probably said it, but what actions did the city take, I guess, since 2011 or whenever, that made it get to this turning point at this time?
Yeah, it's a very good question. It's been 10 years in the making. In 2011, the, what was used for funding was called an open increasing amortization. And basically, you can see from this page, that meant that there was gonna be a difference where the unfunded liability was never gonna get paid off. Open means it was never gonna go down from 30 years. It had been 30 years, 10 years earlier, it was still 30 years. So paying the minimum on your credit card, that's kind of like paying the maintenance, paying less than the minimum is what the funding policy was. We, at that point in time, I worked with the boards, they voted to change it to a closed 30 years. So it was 30 years, then 29, 28, 27, et cetera. They actually skipped a year, which is, which was a good move, bringing it from, instead of from 22 down to 21, they went from 22 down to 20. And that's how we're able to turn the corner because a shorter amortization means a bigger payment and more towards the unfunded liability.
So we paid more money to equal our maintenance instead of less that kept the gap widening?
Yes, yeah, the, the, once you get down to 20 years, and then it'll be 19, and 18, and 17 going forward, that will start turning the unfunded liability in the right direction, and I'll show you that.
Thank you.
I just want to point out a clarification. I see your hand, Councilmember Wood. You're saying that the unfunded liability, if we keep up this trend, will not grow, but the payment will grow still.
Yes, and I'm gonna show you both of those things. I'll show you the projected amount and the projected benefit.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Greg, isn't there a couple of other things? We did two early retirements, and then we had two systems, both the 911 operators and the ZIL employees that ended up going to the county, and we had to actually pay out to the county for all the money that we had in there invested to the county to go into their retirement plan. So not only were there fluctuations in the market, but there were other things that happened as well that contributed.
Yes, I agree, and I was not there for the old retirement window. That was over 25 years ago, I believe. But I was there for the airport, I mean, for the, sorry, the 911. So yeah, yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
That's it for questions. Please continue.
Same type of graph for OPEB, except we don't do this valuation every year. It's on every few years, so you see the years are kind of spread out by two years. But a couple of things to notice here. Number one, the OPEB funding is very, very low, and that's mainly a function of the city doesn't really contribute much. With the pension funds, we have an actuarial amount, even though it was based on a 30-year amortization, it was still an actuarial amount, and it was being contributed every year. The city lived up to that. For OPEB, there is an actual amount, but it's not, it's never made it into the budget. So there's just a small contractual amount or statutory amount, that's bottom here. So these numbers are based on if the city started fully pre-funding years, that we would use a higher discount rate, 7% versus what is required by the state, what's required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. I'm not gonna get into all those issues, but they require a lower discount rate, which makes the unfunded liability look really high. But to keep this consistent with all the other graphs in here and pension information, this is what we get, and it's gone from 10% to 33%. So that's good news. This has gone from a, got above 400 million, this is unfunded liability for all the retired healthcare, which is both plans, down to less than 250 million right now. So this is another thing I would categorize as a good news. This one's moving in the right direction. It's, and it's not a function of what's been contributed. It's a function of changes in benefits, and most recently, which I'll show you in a minute, a change in one of the plans that cover Medicare retirees. Retiree healthcare is much, much more flexible in terms of changing benefits. Pensions, they kind of are what they are. They're, you know what someone's benefit is, paid for the rest of their life. Healthcare costs fluctuate up and down every year. So this is going in the right direction, and again, I'll show you, you know, is this gonna increase? You know, is it gonna triple again? Is this gonna keep going down? We'll look at that. So that leads into benefit and funding policy for the systems, which is tied to where we are now. It's tied to the historical funding, and it's also gonna be tied to the future funding. So some information here on the benefit policy. There have been many changes through the collective bargaining process. That's between the city and the quarters. I don't get involved with that, except to the extent when there's a change, we need to work it into our numbers, put a price tag on it. Ideally, we look at it ahead of time, so the city knows what cost to be on it. But the changes are varied by bargaining unit, by date of hire, by date of retirement, and it's gotten pretty complex. But there are a lot of collective bargaining agreements, and they all have these things specified. So the changes included eligibility for benefits based on age and service combination, changes in the plan to maybe a savings account or defined contribution plan for some people, changes in the pension multiplier. For example, police and fire, it was 3.2% for a year of service. Now it's two and a half if you were hired after a certain date. Changes in employee contributions, employees paying more. Which benefits are covered? Medical, dental, vision, post-Medicare, and dependent coverage, that refers only to, these two refer to retiree healthcare. And the cost sharing, how much the retirees have put in. And most recently, Medicare retirees will move to another plan, and that was a, that had a big positive impact on the funding. We'll look at that in a second. So all of these changes, they've been made to an attempt to decrease future costs. And they're doing that to some extent, but some changes have a delayed effect. Think about a change that only applies to new hires as of a certain date, say, January 1, 2015. Well, as of January 1, 2015, that had zero impact. By now, it has some impact because there have been people hired since then. But to get the full effect of any one of those changes, it takes decades, and there's a work into our progression. So the current cost of the benefits, and we're looking at everything here. Total actuarial cost, again, is normal cost plus the amortization component. The city normal cost is the total less whatever the employees are contributing, that's for the pension. That's what I would consider the actual cost of the benefits. The city puts in a lot more than these numbers here at the bottom. That's because the unfunded liability is so high. Most of the contribution is going towards trying to get that unfunded liability going in the right direction. Most of the contribution is going towards trying to get that unfunded liability going in the right direction. But if you just isolate, what does the whole benefit package cost? ERS, this is the pension system, $1.7 million. That's for everybody. Uh, police and fire, 4.4 million. It's more expensive because they retire, uh, earlier. For most part with a higher benefit. Uh, the ERS, OPEB, other post employment benefits, retiree healthcare, 1 million a year. Again, these are all for the whole population. Uh, and police and fire, so the total benefit cost for the package for every city employee right now is 8.79 million dollars a year. If that was all the city had to contribute, I probably wouldn't even be talking to you right now. Um, it's the unfunded liability that's the issue. Um, I think that's a pretty reasonable, uh, benefit cost in comparison with other jurisdictions. So that's what, uh, goes into part of the projection also. Uh, the funding policy, so that was benefit policy and the funding policies, as I mentioned, the city contributes the actual cost. It's based on increasing amortization payments. That's not ideal, but again, it was a matter of, can we have the city increase the budget by four or five million dollars all at once? Uh, and it just was never feasible. It was over 30 years, as I mentioned, now it's 20. That's good. That's, that's moving in the right direction. Um, this, this increasing cost is also referred to as level percentage payroll. I like to refer to it as what it is, it's increasing. Uh, but the concept of level percentage payroll means if your payroll is going up by two and a half percent every year. And your amortization payment is going up by two and a half percent, then it should stay a level percent. That's why I call it that. Um, the OPEB policy is a little different. The city pays the annual benefit cost, pay as you go. Uh, so that comes directly from the budget. Uh, plus there are some contributions to OPEB assets. Uh, smaller amounts than, than the actual amounts, as I mentioned, but. The OPEB assets exist as subsets of the retirement system assets. If you read the reports or if you read the city's cap ratio, you can see that. But so they're, they're part of the retirement fund and it's just separated. It's not used for the pension funding, it's only used for OPEB. And there's a separate VBA trust for ERS, uh, voluntary employee benefits association. So there are contributions going into the OPEB and there's nothing coming out. That's another reason that funds were able to go from 10% to 33%, because there's nothing coming out of there. Whereas on the pension side, you have, you saw earlier, there's twice as much coming out as going in. The other part of the funding policy, uh, before we look at the, the, uh, where we are now is the actuarial assumptions. So instead of this being between the city and employees, this is between the trustees and the actuary. So my firm develops all these assumptions based on actual experience. We look at this every five years and most recently it was just February. Uh, and I know some of you were at the, the board meetings, but the, the newest assumptions were adopted to be, to be used for this year. So, you know, when people retire, level of termination, destility, how long people live, mortality tables, et cetera. We do it every five years because you can't do it every year. It, the, the experience fluctuates too much to, to, uh, nail it down in one year. But you can't wait 10 years either, because you don't pick up on trends like people living longer, people retiring earlier or later or whatever. So every five years is the best practice. The expected return on investments, which is also known as the discount rate within the full pre-funding scenarios. It's now at 7% for all the pension and OPEB valuations. The healthcare specific assumptions, we can update those every year. You don't need five years for the trends to happen there. You can see what's happening with the cost of coverage, with the premium equivalents, et cetera. So we update, update these things every time we do a valuation. So that brings us to, where are we now? So current status is not really current as in June 7, 2021. It's current as in the last time we noticed it, which is December 31st, 2019. Uh, and the next time is December 31st, 2020, which, once we get the data, we'll have those numbers for you. So here's the planned population, 1,700 people receiving benefits, both systems combined. Uh, benefits paid in 2020, this is an estimate because we don't have the actual numbers yet. Uh, it's, it's got to be fairly close, $59 million. So an average benefit, again, both systems combined, 2,900 a month, average age of all the retirees, 68. Of course, it's younger for police and fire and it's older for ERS. For retiree healthcare, 1,400 of those 1,700 are receiving retiree healthcare benefits. That doesn't include dependents. So if people have family coverage, there's faithful coverage, that's, that's more people covered. The benefits paid annually recently have been 20 to 24 million a year. Um, and that, that cost curve just went down based on a recent change, which I'll mention in a minute, in a minute. Um, it's also, in addition to the people receiving benefits, there's, depending on when you jack, 750, 800 employees. And 900 to 100 former employees with deferred benefits. So they work for the city, they earn the vested benefit, they're just not old enough to collect it yet. So we keep them in the valuation until they turn that age. The valuation results, there's two pages here. There's, uh, the retirement systems and then there's retiree healthcare. So the retirement systems, these numbers are all from our reports. Uh, there's nothing new here, just summarizing it for you, but. We have, I'll, I'll just go to the totals column unless anybody wants to focus on the other ones, but. 774 million in pension liability and 447 assets. That's that shortfall, that, that's the, the $150 million shortfall that we looked at. You know, right here for, for, uh, ERS and 177 police and fire, they were on the graph. The plan cost, members contributing three and a half million. So that's, you know, all the city employees put together, they're putting three and a half million into the trusts. The city normal cost is that 6.1 that we looked at a couple of minutes ago, these two pieces. But the amortization is the big piece. Again, that, that's why the contribution is high and that's why it's a challenge. It's a challenge every year, you know, for the budget and it's a challenge. A, a little longer term than that, you know, we're talking about 20 years because that's the amortization period. But that's a huge piece of it. 23 million out of 29 is going towards working on an unfunded liability. The OPEB systems, these valuation results are not in the last report because they've been adjusted. There was a significant plan change made earlier this year. Where the post 65 and Medicare folks were put into a different plan and the plan is much more cost effective. Uh, such that when we run the valuation again and project all the future costs, eventually everybody is getting to be past that age. That is an $80 million decrease in the unfunded liability. Uh, so that's, that's a big chunk. Uh, and you know, that's not something you can do with the benefit policy on the pension side. There's, there's no way to change a, a benefit structure so that someone who's getting something worth $3,000 a month is worth less. Because they're just getting the money. Um, so 247 million dollar unfunded liability there, the combined percentage after the change, 31%. The 33% I showed you earlier is projected for 1121, that's why it's right there. The plan cost, here's the normal cost, again, we looked at those numbers earlier, but the amortization is the biggest piece of it. Now the city is not putting that money into the fund. But the pay as you go cost, I mentioned earlier, is 20 to 24 million. So that's being, uh, put into the budget and that's being paid every year. Uh, along with a little bit of pre-funding and, and I have more to say about that, but. Before I go on to the next section, I just want to ask if there's any questions on the valuation result. And if, if I, if people are putting their hand up, a little signal.
Yeah, I'm monitoring that, Greg. Um, we, I just want to remind you, we do have a few other presentations this night and have a seven o'clock hard stop. Or at least a, I'd hard stop, hard soft stop, so. Um, high points would be, would be good if you could share the presentation with us. We can, we can take a look at it offline.
Yes, absolutely. Yep, I'll send it to you. All right, let me get to the good stuff. Yeah, so here is the projected funding. So I have several graphs to go over with you, just spend a few minutes on each. There's two sets for ERS, two sets for police and fire, and one for the combined OPEB for all the plans put together. So compare this to what we looked at earlier, which was, everything's going in the wrong direction. This starts at 2021. So the last graph was that ended at 2020, so that this picture, this is being to the right of that and it's continuing. So is the 52% going to improve? Yes. Is it going to look exactly like this? No, that's why I had this disclaimer at the bottom of every slide for the projections. The actual figures will be different because they're based on what actually happened. We don't know what's going to happen, but this is a best estimate. This is based on, I mean, it's a, just a forecast of everything we know right now. That unfunded liability goes down to zero in 20 years. Specifically because the amortization period is 20 years. The cost, it's that increasing amortization. So 20 years from now, yeah, we do expect that contribution to be $20 million. Starting at, you know, where we think it's going to be next year. However, the percentage of pay, I mentioned this a little bit earlier, this does, uh. It, it's very useful to think about percentage of pay when you look at a cost 25 years out. Because $20 million in 2041, I really don't know what's that, that's worth. Because there's increases in the cost of living, you know, everything is more expensive, salaries are higher. So if you look at it as a percentage of pay, it's a way of thinking of it in today's dollars. So yes, it's increasing, but really in today's dollars, we expect it to be about the same for 20 years. And then, once you're 100% funded, the only cost is that benefit cost. The one where I showed you is 8.7 million for everybody for all benefits. We see a similar picture for, for police and fire, you know, different percentages, different levels, same story. 20 years, down to zero. Amortization payments increasing, not so much in the first few years. Because this is a whole nother topic, but there's, there's assets moving. If you have investment gains, you recognize them over five years. So sometimes that helps, uh, keep the contribution increases manageable. After that's recognized, you do see the increases. But again, percentage of pay, today's dollars, about the same for the next two decades. And then down to just the benefit cost. The OPEB is a little different. Because nothing's being paid out of the OPEB trust. Um, the, there's a little bit of money going in, a little over a million dollars a year. And the rest is just pay as you go. However, this is being discussed right now, for the first time, I think, ever. Uh, at some point, when those trusts get, get big enough, we get to that critical mass. The city should start paying, uh, benefits out of that. So that means you're taking $20 million from your budget and it's coming out of the trust instead. That's a big deal and that's, that's why, what, you know, this is currently under discussion. We have a group working with there at the city to, to figure out, when's the right time to do this? What small changes in funding policies we make? So that when we're projected to be at 95%, we can stay at 95%. Keeping it the current policy, it's going to cause this to start increasing again, because the actual amounts aren't going in. But I, I believe with some small adjustments, we could get this to look just like the pension going to zero. So ERS expected to start paying out of the trust in 10 years or so. Uh, and that's when that, that amount can come out of the budget. Police and fire, longer, because the, the post 65 changes doesn't affect them as much, they're a younger population. Plus they're starting at a lower percentage. But still, this is going in the right direction, that's going to help. And so the cost for OPEB, and this is essentially the last slide, except for a couple of closing comments. The cost of OPEB going forward looks like this. It is pay as you go until we start paying out of the trust or until we think you can start paying out of the trust. And then there's that big drop off. Because the trust fund can be used to pay benefits, ERS here and both systems here. So that's a good picture. Yes, it's increasing and, and that doesn't have to do anything with the amortization. That's just because healthcare costs tend to increase year over year. There's a few pieces to this. There's the pay go, I call it adjusted because it's adjusted when you can pay out of the trust. There's the pre-funding, which is for everyone still in the plans, it's a closed group, so that eventually goes to nothing. And there's the new plan, the replacement plan, which goes from nothing and increases as you hire more people. That's the cost profile for the retiree healthcare. And the last thing I'll say here is that, yes, the contributions are increasing for the funding policies, it's that increased amortization. But good news, significant funding improvement expected for all the systems. Not just the pension, not just, uh, the, the OPEB, but every, every one of them. And, and that's just keeping things the way they are now. If we keep working on those funding strategies for the OPEB, uh, things will get better. Uh, retirement systems unfunded liabilities, on, on an as expected basis, should be all the way down to zero, 20 years. The OPEB funding is improving, but I can't put a deadline or timeline on that because we are still discussing the proper funding strategy. And most importantly, from, you know, me doing my job, I have to tell everyone that the funding is dynamic. So whatever I show you is a projection, you look at next year, five years, 10 years down the road. It could be very different if you think about, you know, what happened in 2008. Major, uh, you know, market downturn, that changed everything. So, you know, one year can change this a lot, something like that happens. Uh, so we just have to keep an eye on it. And again, that's why we look at it every year. So that, that is all I have for you. I, I thank you for your attention. I know it was long. And I will send a copy of this along and you can all take a look at it when you want. And I will be happy to answer questions anytime you have them. Uh, you can get Judy and she'll get them to me.
Thank you. Greg, thank you for the information. I do want to open it up to questions from council members, though. I know there's a lot to process there, but a lot of good information, at least to have in the back of our heads. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. Um, Greg, part of what we've heard is that we're looking at a $900 million. Dollar, um, legacy cost. What I'm hearing you say is that's not correct.
Uh, yeah, I'm definitely saying that. I, I did see a $900 million number quoted somewhere. I forget exactly where, but it, it also is in the context of, this is where the city will be in 20 years. I'm frankly, I'm the expert on this. Um, not only in general, but especially for the city, I've been working on it a long time. And so my 20 year numbers, if you put all four funds together, OPEB and retirement systems, it's not even close to 900 million, it's less than 100 million.
Less than 100 million?
Yeah, it's, uh, I think it was somewhere around 60 total.
60 million, okay.
Where they are now, we're, we're working on that to try to get it closer to zero.
Um, I, you know, I, I think sometimes, and I think the numbers were in the press. But I think sometimes when those numbers are out there, that's what everyone is gleaming on to. And I think that's why it's important and I appreciate, um, President Spatafor and Judy having this on. So we can have this, um, honest discussion on this and look at the fact. Uh, you know, and having sat on the retirement board for a number of years. Um, listening to the recommendations, being willing to make those changes. And then there were some changes that we had no control over. I know in, um, 2001, the city made the assumption rate for OPEB at 8%. You know, which was, you know, they, so the payments would be less that they had to pay in. You know, and so, I mean, those, those types of things, you know, have, have a huge impact on, on what we're doing. So I think when we look at this, you know, it's, it's important. Um, that we understand that, you know, based on your recommendations and market trends. And all the things that we continue to look at. Um, that there are adjustments being made and changes are happening. And, um, it's still allowing us to make sure that we're making the payments to those that we promised. Retirement benefits to as well as healthcare benefits and, you know, we're keeping our promise.
Did, did you, there was no response needed, correct? Carol, thank you. Okay. Um, I see no commentary, okay, I just want to make sure. Sometimes there are carefully hidden questions and commentary. Um, so I see no other hands. Uh, Greg, if you could pass that, um, presentation along, I would love to have a copy of it myself. Uh, Judy, any closing comments while, while I thank Greg for his participation in presentation this evening and work for the city?
No, I just am really grateful that I've been able to work with Greg. He's been fantastic. And then the board, the retirement boards, Carol, Peter, you served on it as well, um, have been phenomenal. So I, I'm very optimistic, I'm very, um. I'm glad that we are taking the time that we need to actually study this, to look at different recommendations and to find the best, uh, solutions for the city. So I, those are the things that I just wanted to, to, to share and thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Judy. Uh, our next presentation, um, pertains to the Mayor's Racial Justice and Justice and Equity Alliance. Uh, with a presentation from Jonathan Butler Esquire, he's the Equity Manager in San Antonio, Texas. And let me just set the stage here while we bring, uh, Mr. Butler in. Um, as you all recall, during the budget process, the mayor proposed approximately $300,000 for, uh, work for the MRJA. Um, and the council put that in what I'm going to call a control account, but Jim will tell me that's not the accurate term and Carol will agree with him. But we're just going to go with it for tonight. And one of the things we had requested was sort of background on where the, the mayor and his team and the commission or the alliance came up with. Some of the proposals found within that allocation and that request for funding. Uh, Mr. Butler from San Antonio, um, was, uh, one of the in, uh, persons that helped inform those conversations, is my understanding. So we've asked, uh, Mr. Butler and Director Coleman here this evening to speak to that. Um, while we still are in the era of Zoom meetings, making it easier to bring someone in from San Antonio. So, um, I don't see Director Coleman, there she is. So, um, I don't see Director Coleman, there she is. So we'll. Just for a minute and let, uh, Director Coleman get situated and then, um, open it up to her for an introduction. And then, uh, Mr. Butler will, uh, take it from there. So Director Coleman, the floor is yours.
Good evening, President Spatafor, um, Mayor Shaw, committee members and guests. If you don't mind, please also allow Chief Green to be a part of this panel.
Yes, Dominic's got a list, Chief Green.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you this evening. When last we met, there were some concerns expressed regarding the approach we were planning to move our race and equity work forward. After considerable thought, I asked to return this evening with hopes of leaving you with the vision and passion. Shared by the executive team for the work yet to be done. As we worked to pull together the race and equity plan for the Lansing City Government. We consulted with the Governmental Alliance on Race and Equity and the National League of Cities, but we were offered and received. Uh, leadership training, resources and recommendations for municipalities that were already doing the work that we were planning. Among those suggested were San Antonio, Texas, uh, Seattle, Washington, Malnoma County, Oregon. And Minneapolis, Minnesota, to name just a few. As a result of those contacts, we had an opportunity to spend time, ask questions, share information and resources. With the city of San Antonio. And I can't thank Jonathan Butler enough for the support he's shown us. With that said, I invited Jonathan to be here to this evening to talk about their best practice model in San Antonio, Texas. So that we could begin to envision the possibilities here in Lansing. I've asked him to share what they are doing and why he supports the first steps that the city of Lansing is taking. To develop the foundation and prepare city leaders and employees for undertaking this important task. So that you know, Jonathan Butler is a native of Atlanta, Georgia and has over twenty years of experience cultivating and strengthening relationships. With diverse constituencies. As an equity manager for San Antonio, he develops and promotes strategies to increase equitable, equitable outcomes citywide. Before joining the Office of Equity, Jonathan managed the Neighborhood Services and Development Division for Chattanooga. Where he expanded affordable housing and neighborhood revitalization opportunities. And created leadership training for programs, leadership training programs, um, for residents. He has been at the front line of racial and social justice issues since his days as a student leader and. Organizer at Emory University where he received his Bachelor's of Arts degree. And he also received or earned a Juris Doctorate degree from American University and is a licensed attorney in Georgia and Virginia. I share all of this with you so that you understand our efforts to reach out, identify. And contact national resources that we believe have knowledge and expertise in doing the work that we are embarking upon. At this time, I will ask that Jonathan proceed with his, with his presentation and know that Chief Green will follow and. Provide closing remarks after Q and A. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Coleman, uh, Mr. Butler.
Great. Thank you for having me. Can you all hear me okay?
I can, yes. Looks like everyone is nodding their heads.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I, I really appreciate you all for giving me this opportunity. Esteemed members of the council, um, it's a pleasure to be with you all today. I'm going to share my screen in just a second after I give just a few. Um, additional thank yous, if you don't mind. I, I have to thank the mayor and the mayor's team. Um, particularly the members of the Racial Justice and Equity Alliance for inviting me to participate in their recent. Meetings of which, um, Chief Green, um, was in attendance. Um, their chairperson, Teresa Bingman, um, exceptional leader and thank her for her stewardship. I would not be joining you all today without the brilliance of Kim Coleman and Guadalupe Ayala. Who are exceptional members of your community and so you all should. Um, feel very comforted in the fact that you all are in tremendous hands. As wonderful co-collaborators in attempting to move this work forward. Um, thank you, Kim and Guadalupe for your leadership and for welcoming me to the city of Lansing with open arms. Um, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I am going to attempt to share my screen. And then we will walk you through, um, this presentation that I have that I am calling. Advancing Equity. In City Government. Um, give me a nod of affirmation if you can indeed see my screen that includes. Um, the title Advancing Equity in, in Government, um, featuring the city of Lansing. Thank you so much. So whenever I begin discussions of equity. I try to invite people into the room by having them understand something about me. That you might not find on that resume or introduction that Kim so graciously offered. This idea is to try to create both safe and brave spaces. And what I'm doing for you all is modeling some of the teaching techniques that I will later come back to. That the Race and Justice Equity Alliance is proffering as good recommendations. What I'm attempting to do is say, hey, I want to invite you all into the space of connecting to our common sense of humanity in some way. By thinking about and talking about the places, the food, the smells, the sounds, the people. That are a part of your upbringing. They may be very different than mine. But they are common in the sense that we have certain things that we can point to that. Put us in the mindset of place. So I'm going to share just a snippet of what we call where I'm from points. The idea for these poems come from great mentors of mine, a group called Cultures Connecting. Based in Seattle, Washington. I have the book that I'm going to recommend to Kim and her team. Uh, for you all, it's called Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Strategies for Facilitating Conversations on Race. But this idea is to set us up by saying, hey, safe spaces create areas of comfort. Brave spaces create areas in which we can lean into discomfort. To promote more effective problem solving, particularly for the people of your community. I'm from places of red clay, pecans, not pecans, and varsity peach pies. Where we drink sweet tea, lemonade and Coca-Cola on front porches in our Sunday baths. Where we feel old churches with Easter speeches and poems from Dunbar. In days when black folks thought their prosperity was reserved for preachers and teachers. But my parents insisted that I would be just as good in science as I was with words. And even though I hit baseballs like Henry Aaron when I was young, I was always a scholar. And I am still learning. As Kim introduced, my name is Jonathan Butler. I use the reference pronouns of he, him in identification and in description. I bring you greetings near the banks of the San Antonio River. Known by native people as Yanaguana or place of refreshing waters. On land of native and first people representing hundreds of groups. Collectively known as the Tapilum Gohui Tecon Nation and the Tonkawa. As Kim told you some pieces of my bio, I'm an attorney by training, so I really do appreciate folks like Greg. Who were able to give the presentation that happened before me because that is not in my wheelhouse, that is not my strength. And as a public servant who can appreciate fully the jobs that you all have been called to do. I can appreciate the fact that we bring different strengths, different bodies, different beings into our workspace. And to the things that we are attempting to do to advance life for the residents of the folks in Lansing, Michigan. In San Antonio, we are a population of about one point five million people. I know it's larger than your jurisdiction, but I don't want you to be moved in any way by the size. We are the second largest city in Texas. We are the seventh largest city in the U S. We have about thirteen thousand city employees and forty city departments with a budget of about two point nine billion. We are a strong city manager centered government with the mayor and ten council members that make up. The governing body for our city. This is also San Antonio. We are one of the leading cities in income segregation. Residents on one side of town have a shorter lifespan by more than twenty years than residents on another. In addition to income and geography, race is a predictor of one's outcomes in our community, unfortunately. San Antonio is more than one third of our residents are housing burdened. And one in six people, one in five children live in poverty. We are still working actively to target and eliminate these disparities. Let me give you another snapshot of some of the additional disparities and later I'll come back to. Why I'm emphasizing this for you all's presentation and how it will affect the work that you all will do moving forward. If we look at the poverty rate, Native Americans are nearly three times more likely to live in poverty. And blacks and Latinx people are nearly two times more likely to live in poverty than their white counterparts. The median hourly income is about twenty-two dollars for whites. While it is seventeen dollars for African Americans and fifteen dollars for Latinx members of our community. Blacks and Latinx renters are more likely to experience housing burden. Employment, Native American, African American, Latinx females and males are more likely to be unemployed. Than their white counterparts, homeownership rate. Uh, blacks are twice as, um, whites are twice as likely to be homeowners than blacks. Health insurance, COVID, you name it. Significant disparities and challenges produce significant opportunities. What we are operating under within our theory of change within the city of San Antonio is adopted from the. Government Alliance of Race and Equity. It's this idea that we can normalize, organize and operationalize. Concepts of equity. What I did for you in the beginning of this presentation. Was an attempt to normalize some concepts. One, identification in terms of use of pronouns. When I came to San Antonio, this was not something that was very common in either Chattanooga, Tennessee or Atlanta, Georgia. In terms of this idea of adopting pronouns as ways to be more inclusive. Of the ways in which people might identify through both sexual orientation and gender identification. These concepts are continuously evolving, normalizing. I did what we would call, or some folks would call a land acknowledgement. When I gave some homage to those native and first people that preceded me in place. Normalizing concepts of social justice and equity is this concept of. What we're attempting to lean into with this first prong of the theory of change. When we talk about organizing, I'll go into more detail briefly about how we attempt to organize staff and community. Um, to act, to, uh, to do more in the space of moving the needle forward underneath the equity umbrella. In operationalizing, we're talking about specific policies, programs, practices, procedures within the institution. That we can use to move equity forward within our workplace. It's common that folks talk about diversity, equity and inclusion underneath the same umbrella. When I first started in this work, we used to talk about affirmative action. Ideas of affirmative action evolved into ways in which we would think about multiculturalism and polyculturalism. Those ideas then evolved in spaces in which we talked specifically about diversity. We then moved to diversity and inclusion and now we are talking about equity and we are attempting to center equity. More in outcomes that could be more beneficial for people. When we talk about diversity, we're just talking about who's in the room, who's been invited to the party as the great noted scholar Werner Myers would say. Who do we have represented? Um, what types of folks are they? What backgrounds? What races? What genders? All of these types of things. Fit neatly within the diversity umbrella. When we talk about inclusion, we talk about how people feel. Do they feel comfortable coming to the party? Do they feel comfortable and asked to dance in the party? Do they feel like they can be themselves and participate fully in the party? But when we talk about equity, we talk about all of the decisions that are made in orchestrating this party from top to bottom. Who's participating in the decision making as we think about? Who's going to be on the invite list? Where are we going to have this party? What kind of music are we going to play? What's the budget associated with it? All of these types of things that go into creating and making the party itself. We think about those are the proponents of equity. Um, how do we think about what decisions are being made in the room? I love this diagram of the contrast between equity and equality. Because it goes away from some of the traditional things that you all may have seen with people being represented by sitting on boxes. Would this at, or standing on boxes, would this actually predict, um, uh, presents? It's this idea that equality is giving everybody the same thing. No matter who they are, where they are, or where they start, it's giving them the same bicycle. Without considering whether or not they have mobility challenges or a wheelchair bound. To where they would need a specific apparatus, a specific bike to fit their needs. It doesn't think about whether you're tall or short. It doesn't think about how you might be able to have the right bike. That fits you. When we talk about equity, we're talking about problem solving based on needs. And trying to problem solve effectively based on the needs of people. That is contrasted with equality. Where we may give everybody the same resources at the same time, regardless of what their needs, of regardless of where they are. I like this description. I'll come back to this slide in a second. What my mother said to me, when we don't all start at the same place. With the same things at the same time. Equity and equitable policymaking. Encourages recognizing and acknowledging those differences. And then accounting for them in how we address and solve problems. My mother once told me that I didn't need the same type of attention that my brother did. After she dealt with us differently, my mom used to say, hey, I didn't need to stay on you to do your homework. You were much more independent and maintained. So you and your brother had different needs. You had different challenges. And so as we think about, um, your city and you think about even your districts. All of your districts likely have very different needs and different challenges. And finding the right problem solving solutions for your jurisdictions are going to be based on some of that data that I gave you earlier. Where are the disparities? Where's the need? Where are the challenges most apparent in our city? Go back up to this. Equity then, for our purposes in this discussion. Is our policymaking, service delivery and distribution of resources accounting for the different histories. The different challenges and the needs of the people we serve. Equity also means just and fair opportunities and outcomes for all people. We look at data as being essential to making equity decisions. Equity should be based in data and it should be data driven. And we are trying to predict and eradicate these ideas that incomes can be determined by zip codes. Outcomes can be determined by zip codes. People's fate can be determined by zip codes. We're trying to dismantle that by focusing on the needs in community. Why equity and particularly racial equity in government? I gave you some disparity data as racial inequities continue to be deep, pervasive. And persistent across indicators of success, including education, jobs, housing. income, health. You want to layer on the pandemics of COVID and race. All of these types of things are indicators of the challenges that we have with racial inequities. Government at all levels has had a role in creating and maintaining these inequities and disparate outcomes, even if the intent to discriminate was not present. Oftentimes, we pass racially neutral laws that have disparate impacts on communities of color. We're attempting to think about that more critically and find the intervention points to ensure that outcomes can be better for all people and particularly for those people of color. Examining the institutional policies and practices, we believe that is necessary in order to address the underlying drivers of racial inequities. And local governments can be proactive in advancing racial equity by explicitly focusing on the needs of their communities. In the city of San Antonio, we've broken down our equity strategies this way. We look at that bucket that I talked to you about of normalizing, organizing, and operationalizing in this way. Our normalizing component is largely based on training. It is essential that we believe folks have robust training apparatus. I'm gonna talk in a little bit more detail about that when I close out my remarks. Training is not gonna solve all your problems. But training is a critical first step to beginning to think about how we normalize certain concepts and certain ideas. What we have done to advance our training, um, mechanisms within the city is we've created an equity trainer program which includes city staff people. When I talk about how that may be relevant to you all's jurisdiction, it may include a combination of how do we use our resources to train city staff? But it also might mean how do we couple that with our relationships in community to work together to advance some of these issues and equity. Organizing, we have what we call a citywide equity committee. And we have equity resources within departments. I'm gonna come and talk a little bit more detail about that equity committee. I don't want that to be confused with the overall thought processes around an office. This is a particular committee that is made up of city workers from each department. I'll talk to you about that in a little bit more detail. When we talk about operationalizing equity and we think about ways in which departments can enact strategies, we think specifically about how do those departments analyze themselves? How do they assess what they do? And how do they assess problem solving based on the need for the residents that they serve? We have some plans and some tools that I will reference again in the following slides. Our Train the Trainer Program is a program in which recently we completed our second cohort of trainings. I mentioned to you all earlier, we have about forty city departments. Well, we've trained about eighty members representing all of those departments to provide certain trainings that are specific under the equity umbrella. We have three components of that training. It's called Equity 101, 201, and 301. The Equity 101 component is advancing equity in local government. The Equity 201 component is centering equity. How do we understand root causes of inequities so that we might problem solve for those challenges? Part three is leading with equity. How do we champion within the institution transform, transformational change that largely talks to how do we budget and allocate resources towards dismantling some of the problems that we have in our community? Go back up to the Train the Trainer slide for a second. These trainers learn these equity concepts, and it's their idea and our idea that they then go into their departments. And they are the primary modes to be able to deliver this content within their departments. I mentioned thirteen thousand employees and only five folks in our office. Um, we have a chief equity officer and a senior administrative assistant, and then three persons who are equity managers. It's impossible for us to speak directly to thirteen thousand city employees. It's even more impossible for us to then figure out how do we also engage community within ingraining these concepts? We need people to be able to mold and shape to help us do that. And that's the really one of the central tenants of a great training program. When we talk about that committee organizing around people to help solve problems, our idea is that the policy platform for our city comes from this group that we call the Citywide Equity Committee. The idea for them is that they come up with recommendations that are high-level policy initiatives that can be enacted throughout the city. I'll give you an example of one of those things. Recently, we had a policy that was a dress code policy, and we had very descriptive language associated with the dress code policy that was associated with very genderized ways of thinking of people. Very much a traditional way of thinking about women as wearing skirts and blouses and men as wearing ties. This group made the recommendation with our involvement of how we change that policy to ensure that we've got policies that are more inclusive and less genderized based on traditional mechanisms of the ways in which people would identify themselves. This group is made up of at least one staff member from each department, and we interact with them monthly, teaching around a curriculum and also building some things within the apparatus in which they work specifically when their department, within their department, to think about how they can execute equity-oriented policies, practices, and procedures. We also have a budget equity tool. I don't know about you all in Lansing, but we are in the budget process right now, thinking about what our budget looks like for our next fiscal year. We have a budgeting for equity tool in which each department is required to account for some ways in which they've allocated resources towards advancing equity. For some departments, let's say outward-facing departments, you may think about everything from community engagement to how you service your work internally, right? For internal-facing operations like a risk management department, we think about how do you think about resolving some of the challenges within work? I love using risk management as an example, because if you think about some of your frontline workers, they oftentimes tend to be lower wage earners, and they tend to be members of communities of color. If we can think about ways in which we can promote safety to reduce risk of harm for them in the workplace, we could really be transforming our both. Um, our accidents and injuries and liabilities, but also the well-being and economic viability and vitality of members of our community who may be our lowest wage earners. We think about all of those things when we think about budgeting for equity. We also do department-wide equity assessments. We have completed, um, and are in the process of completing five department equity assessments within five departments that produce equity action plans that are two-year equity action plans. We recently completed our human resources department, our health department, and our neighborhood and housing services department. These plans serve as the blueprint for these departments as they have worked to identify some of the gaps in the ways in which they are working to try to eliminate disparities, uh, within the target populations that they serve. This is sort of a layout of all of these types of things that we're doing. We are doing strength and opportunities analysis. We've got an equity trainer program. We do these assessments. We did a rapid response tool within response to equity options within the pandemic. We have created a racial equity indicator report. All of these things you all have access to there on our website. We do our budget equity tool. We have our citywide equity committee. And then we have an equity atlas or matrix that I know Kim is gonna speak to you all at some point in more detail about how we ensure that we do some things like overlay the challenges of race and income in our communities to specifically target solutions within those communities. I love the concept of targeted universalism to think about how we advance equity in government. When we think about disabilities advocates who advocated for the Americans with Disabilities Act, one of the things that was preeminent in their advocacy was creating curb cuts and sidewalks so that members of their community could better access and have mobility options within their community. The result, though, was that it helped families stay safer as people were able to walk and push strollers, for example, on sidewalks. I'm sure FedEx and UPS and all of our delivery services have benefited from the fact that their drivers, it reduces risk of injury as they are able to now move more freely and easily as they transport goods and products within that apparatus. That is what the concept of targeted universalism is. If you target solutions towards need, and if you target solutions towards those populations that are most in need, the benefit will transfer to all. My last slides are really this. Our role as public servants, we must shine a light on disparities, reconcile past harms, and identify solutions. One of the things that is central to the recommendation that the Mayor's Racial, um, Justice and Equity Alliance is proffering for you all is this focus on training that I firmly support. The reason being is you have to have basic grounding. Some basic grounding in concepts, some basic grounding in bias, some basic grounding in ways in which we talk about how are we thinking about challenges? How do I, we identify challenges within our community? And then how do we work to solve them? I'm firmly a supporter of the first step being an apparatus in which you create a mechanism to do quality training. It is not, again, the end-all, to-be-all. It is not the only thing that you all should be doing. But you all have to start, and the start is, let's see if we can get our employees, and I'm speaking from the internal perspective. I know you all have an internal and an external scan that you all have been working on. But when we think internally about the needs of our employees, you all as council members and the data and information that you need to be able to make the best decisions. I think grounding folks in these concepts of equity and giving them the abilities to be able to spot disparities, to spot the challenges and identify them is gonna be the first step in attempting to problem solve, plan and budget, and then eradicating them. And so the framework that you all have laid out is very similar to how our office started. Our office started as a diversity office. It started in twenty fifteen after community got together to work with council members like you to pass a more expansive non-discrimination ordinance in our city. The result of that was a diversity office that largely serviced um, any claims or complaints based on that non-discrimination ordinance. It evolved over time based on more knowledge, more understanding, deeper concepts into an office of equity. But the iteration of this office and its real work and all of those things that I've laid out that we are doing really is only twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen that we have been able to do all of those things in earnest. So I want to say to you that you all are heading in the right direction with the right people assembled to do the right work, and it's been a pleasure then for me being able to spend and share some time in these moments with you all and with that team. I'm not sure how you all want to open, um, um, President, um, the conversation for questions. And I'm not sure if Kim and team, I know Chief is going to step in at some point. So, Kim, I'm gonna give the reins back to you and let you make a determination for what will happen next. But again, members of the council, I appreciate your time and attention. I thank you for being on the front lines of problem solving in this arena and for emphasizing it as important in your community and use me as a tool and resource. Kim has my cell phone number, so we are in contact frequently. And any ways in which I can help you and your community make decisions in these arenas, I'm here to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, Director Coleman, please.
Yes, and if I can, please, just so that you know, the plan that was presented to you for the three hundred thousand reflected the, the components that he showed you in his chart. So when he talked about the, um, uh, overlay of different demographics so that we know and understand what's going on in our community, uh, that's part of that budget. When he talked about training the trainers, when he talked about the citywide committee for employees to be involved, because we can't do this by ourselves. It's gonna take all of us, and it's going to require buy-in from the employees to help us make things happen. In order for that to happen, we've gotta lay the foundation for it. What you got last time for me was a plan to carry those things out. And that plan was supporting the, the chart, the, the graph that he shared with you that centered around normalizing, organizing, and operationalizing. So I just wanted to share that with you, and we're not done yet. We're still coming back. But I wanted to give Chief Green an opportunity to speak as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ms. Coleman, and thank you very much, Council President and Council Members. And also thank you, Mr. Butler, for an excellent presentation. And I start from this concept that the Mayor's Racial Justice Equity Alliance is consistent with Mr. Butler's great presentation of which we seek to normalize the concepts of social justice, organize city staff around advancing equity within the institution, and finally, to operationalize equitable policies, programs, and procedures within the city of Lansing. Therefore, the work of the MRJEA is not a conclusion, but a beginning, reimagining, realigning, and sustaining an equitable infrastructure. How can we reimagine an equitable future in Lansing that is sustained and permanent is the question today? Without intentional integration of racial equity and policy development and operations, racial inequities will persist. Racial equity must be explicitly integrated into the city's decision-making processes, practices, and politics. Structure must be established in order to institutionalize this much-needed racial equity work. Therefore, the Mayor's Racial Justice Equities written recommendations, which will be presented June twenty-second, are merely a beginning. And I say this, just the beginning. If they fall short of the need and of the moment, we welcome new, veteran, exciting ideas. However, if the financial resources appear unavailable, then we ask and urge this city to find the political will to fund the necessary funds for this work. Equity work requires much-needed resources. The city must understand that the struggle to end racial inequality in equity is very difficult, protracted, and requires vision, courage, and persistence. We should not waste this moment of high public awareness. If the city of Lansing is to build trust in the communities most affected by institutional racism, it must demonstrate accountability to these very communities. It is our belief as an alliance that to operationalize and institutionalize racial equity work in the city of Lansing, we must create an infrastructure that supports it. With that in mind, I conclude and I ask for your continued support for racial equity work in the city of Lansing. Thank you very much.
We are open for questions.
All right. Thank you, Chief. I think you're Director Coleman, Mr. Butler. Um, in order of raising your hands, Vice President Hussein, Councilmember Wood, then Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I, I appreciate, appreciate, sorry, uh, being recognized. First and foremost, thank you, uh, Mr. Butler. Uh, that was a fantastic presentation. You certainly have a voice for radio, very soothing. And, uh, and I enjoyed, uh, I enjoyed your information. Uh, with regards to Chief Green and, uh, Director Coleman, we certainly appreciate your work as well. Um, just a, just a quick comment. Uh, Chief Green, it's, it's not that there's not the political will um, to support, and it's not that there's not the courage, uh, among this body to support. Uh, what we simply needed to understand was why, uh, in terms of the recommendations that came forward that, um, at least to me, without, uh, some, um, almost, you know, in terms of what we heard tonight, without some, um, without some backing, without some rationale, seemed to be a little, a little, a little fluffy, if I'm going to be real honest with you. So I think tonight's presentation helped. I think really kind of explained the need for some of this foundation building before we kind of elevate and advance toward true equity, you know, within the city. But again, certainly the political will and the courage is there. I, I am curious, however, in terms of how the process played out. You said something, Mr. Butler, about, you know, what we're looking to do, or I should say the recommendations in terms of year one funding and programming, that, that they seem very similar to what was done back in 2015 in San Antonio. I would argue it's probably a carbon copy. And so I'm curious in terms of the MRJEA work, what did that actually look like? And in terms of what they were able to determine in terms of some of those unique circumstances that we're dealing here in the city of, or dealing with here in the city of Lansing, how is that reflected, that work reflected in the plan that was put forth or the recommendations that were put forth? Because it seems like, and I don't want to be critical because I know there's been good work done. It seems like what we did was, you know, we just looked to another community, looked at what they did and implemented. And if that was the case, we certainly could have had our diversity council do that work. So I hope I'm wrong and I really wanted to see where our unique work and our efforts are reflected in this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein, Director Coleman.
Yes, I, I think I can respond a little bit to your, your suggestion, Adam. It was more that went into that than a carbon copy. We've done internal and external scans. And in fact, you'll be able to hear more about the external scan hopefully on the 21st, if we can get that organized. We had to wait before we could present that plan until such time that we got everybody on board with regard to the mayor's cabinet, didn't want to go public, then didn't want to do a council presentation until we had everybody on board. And so we're hoping that we'll have all that in place by the time you all meet again on the 21st so that there will be a second presentation that will be done by Dr. Paul Elam of Michigan Public Health Institute, who actually did the internal scan for us. And so hopefully you'll have an opportunity to get more detailed in. But the information that we know and have learned helped us determine what we needed to do. And it's not just us, but it's many jurisdictions that are doing some similar things and other folks are doing some things differently. So it's not, it's not a carbon.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Vice President Hussein, you all said, oh, actually, Mr. Butler also looked like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. President. The thing about some of the things that we did and some of the advice that I have given to Kim in Guadalupe are not to do everything that we tried to do. A part of the reason is, number one, you all's jurisdiction is smaller. But number two, we kind of did everything and threw the kitchen sink in there. And i- if we had to do it all over again, we wouldn't do it the same way, Councilman. And so some of the recommendations that I've tried to do, so for example, let me draw one contrast. The recommendation to Kim and team is to really lean into this training apparatus first. We didn't do that. We tried to do it all at the same time. And what we're finding, and this is instructive for you all as council members, that if we look at and extract the data that we are getting from now, our third or fourth iteration of the budget equity tool, the responses over time are not as strong as we thought that they would be because we didn't sort of lead in and lean into the training module first before we built out all of the things at the same time. So I think you all will have the benefit of doing some best practices based on some lessons learned. But you all have some things that are stored up for as you all think about how you start that are going to be things that you do later that you'll be able to integrate much more seamlessly than we have been able to do here in San Antonio. So that's just my, my thought process.
Right. Thank you. Next question comes from Councilmember Carol Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Mr. Butler, for your presentation. When Ms. Coleman presented us with the draft proposal, there was a number of comments by council members when they looked at it, trying to understand what justification was for different pots of money for different things, training a trainer and, and a number of those things. I think my concern was because people started peeling off and saying, well, why aren't we putting money here and why aren't we doing that? Is why I made the recommendation and lobbied council to move this into an account that still earmarked this for what it was needed for. And the Mayor's Racial Justice and Equity Strategies but gave you, Ms. Coleman, a longer opportunity to give additional information to council. And having heard the concerns that council had, not trying to piecemeal something together and having, you know, this broken off and that broken off and then looking at, at vetoes and all of those things. So I appreciate the presentation Mr. Butler gave. I think, understanding now that, and I think this is like anything, that if you work at the core and work out by having the staff and the individuals having, that have the buy-in in, in the city, then they are able to project this out, is what I'm hearing from Mr. Butler. They're able to project this out and then envelop the community as be a community response. So I think, you know, having listened to your presentation, it's much clearer now the direction that, that you were going in. I'm wondering from the draft that we were given, if there's any iteration of this that you're making any changes to or better clarification on? And if you are doing that, if you could get that to us by the next, you know, meeting that we have together so that when we're looking at the document that, that we're prepared. I still, I'm, I'm sitting here with a document right in front of me. So, you know, I'm going from, from what we had that was given to us on March, you know, the March 19th draft. So if there have been some changes, I think, you know, that, that would be beneficial to us as, as we're looking at this. And I think then drawing the comparison from the things that Mr. Butler put forth, I think allows us then to, to feel better able to embrace some of the things that, that are out there. Now, the other question I would have for you is, what are the metrics that you're going to use to determine the successfulness of the trainings? Is there something, Mr. Butler, that you've developed, you know, over this process? Or that you're recommending that Ms. Coleman possibly use that will allow us to understand the successfulness of this?
Sure, I'll be brief and then I'll let Ms. Coleman speak. We do a process of both qualitative and quantitative results. We're in the process of examining that. So give you an example, Councilwoman. We have trainings that we do in a lunch and learn format that are also extensions of the trainings that we might be doing directly within departments. And we survey those. And so we survey people based on a series of questions about what they thought and what they felt. But then what we also do is we come back and do deeper dives when we're specific in department. And we ask some specific questions around their understandings of the things that we are attempting to get them to know more about and how they apply it to their work. Okay, so the way then we would track the additional part that is much more quantitative is, okay, based on what you've learned, have you figured out, let's say, let's take a housing context example. And we say, hey, if we said we looked at history of our historic east side or our historic west side or south side, and we knew that these communities were largely redlined and they are income and racially segregated. We've got housing programs now. Did we do any housing programs that then specifically got more applications? For example, from communities in those areas? Did they get more resources based on those higher rates of applications? All of those types of things we look at to see whether or not we are actually moving the needle in both people grasping the concepts of what we're attempting to get them to grasp and then how they are able to apply those in those works. So we, we try to look at both qualitative and quantitative example.
Just a follow-up question on that before Ms. Coleman answers. And, and my question would be, you talked about from the workforce perspective of this. We all know that, you know, part of what has to happen is not just what you're doing in the workforce, but what you're doing in your own personal life. And, and the, the message that you're teaching others around you, your children, your grandchildren, you know, your neighbors. So is there anything that looks at that segment of it?
You, you just gave words that really resonated and spoke to my heart. And so I appreciate you for that prompting. We have a saying that social justice starts at home and equity is everyone's job. Yes, we do lean in and try to work towards eradicating individual and interpersonal racism. My work is largely systems change work, though, in how we are attempting to identify and solve problems within the city of San Antonio. So I'm looking, for example, to make sure that less people, for example, in housing may be displaced, right? Based on income and race. That's a systemic 30,000-foot view of thinking while we are also competing for the hearts and minds of people. The best example that I have for you, Councilwoman, is this. I started doing our Economic Developments Department Equity Assessment. And the person that the director tapped to help work with me from the department on this process within their department really had no equity lens, they had no equity analysis. They thought about things much more based on income and they had much more of an equality-based approach to their thinking. By the end of our engagement, she had a conversation with me and she actually accepted a job to work somewhere else. And she sent me this note and she said, "The last few months have been the most transformational parts in my whole time working here at the city of San Antonio to where I've been able to talk to my family and my husband and my kids and my children about how we actually need to be thinking critically about how we can work in this arena and move the needle and change our own personal attitudes and lives in this arena." She moved her thinking then, based on this largely income-based and economic approach, and was able to center in some more of all of the racial disparities that exist towards thinking about how she can talk to her husband about these issues, who may have tended to leaned on the more conservative end of the spectrum than, than herself. That, that's the real heart of the work that is very difficult to measure. I will be honest with you. But it's also a part of what I'm in the business of. This is why I transitioned from the full-time practice of law to do this work because I have a heart for justice and justice orientation. And my sense is that if we compete for the hearts and minds of people individually, what it will lead to is much more systemic and institutional change. And so I appreciate you for the way that you have given voice to the question. It is not easy to answer, but I will say if we can, in our individual work groups and departments, think about that person we may be working with differently in ways that then help us critically think about, wow, can I examine and admit and be conscious of my bias? If I were doing bias training with you all, I would say this, we all have bias. We all have prejudices. It's not the lack of existence of the bias or the prejudice, it's what we do with it. It's how we use that information about ourselves to inform what we do. I just so happen to have a bias towards what I call racially ambiguous female singer-songwriters who just so happen to play guitar. And if you know anything about folks like her or Corinne Bailey Rae or some of these people, these are the people I gravitate to. It doesn't make the bias any less significant or severe, but it's what I do. If I said to you, Councilwoman, I only consume music from those types of people, then that's something I need to examine, that's something there. So if I only take resumes from people whose names might be John or Steven or Susan and not people whose names who may be Rochny or Anjali or Muhammad, that's what I need to examine. And if we can start getting to that, we can start getting to some changes in outcomes from everything, from personnel to life decisions. I don't know if I answered your question fully, but that was what was on my heart to say to you. And so I appreciate you for asking the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. We have one final hand from Councilmember Kathy Dunbar.
Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Butler, for being here. It was excellent. I have a question because I don't know what the impetus situation was in San Antonio or whether there were disputes or lawsuits or ongoing systemic issues that were still being, I don't know if the word is adjudicated, but how do you envision moving forward? Because everything seems to be like a from here forward change. How do you incorporate the wrongs that have been done and are still, the pain that's still being felt from that? Because accountability was, I heard the word once. But that is, it's not enough just to move forward. We still have to make some folks whole and, and heal some folks and, and be accountable to wrongs that we have perpetrated on folks in the past. So how do you see that working in this forward-looking framework? Which I don't have a problem with the forward-looking. I just, I want to know in what, what the framework looks like for, for dealing with the harm that's already been done?
Very complicated and very difficult question to answer. Let me say in this way, though, the way that we look at how you marry the ideas of what has happened historically with how we move forward from that don't have to be divorcing ourselves in any way from history. The forward-thinking does not divorce from history. The forward-thinking still takes into context the results and the benefits and the burdens of history. The way that I would say it in terms of practicality would be like this. If we had $200 million, and this is a real-world example, we got about $220 million that we reallocated in business resources based on the CARES Act funding, more towards workforce development. Yes, we put a portion into PPE for small businesses. We put a portion into how do we continue to keep small businesses afloat in the middle of the pandemic? But we also, we also got over $200 million of resources to be appropriated specifically towards those workers who were in low-income, low-words-earning jobs, largely moved out of those jobs, restaurant industry types of jobs in high concentrations of communities of color. We got resources appropriated to where those folks can get the benefits of trade programings, additional educations, career transition programs. trade programings, additional educations, career transition programming. All of those resources can have an effect in trying to undo some of the systemic and historic challenges of cycles of inequity. What we're trying to do is disrupt and interrupt the continuous perpetual cycles of poverty, inequity, lack of resources, lack of connection, lack of, all these types of things. I think that does speak to ways in which we say, hey, we've got a map. If you look at our equity atlas, and you look at that map and you overlay where the histories of those redlining policies were, that will tell you all of the incomes of folks in communities of color and where their incomes are. It mirrors exactly redlined practices that were from the 30s and 40s, right? So yes, the ways in which we now try to disrupt while acknowledging history is use that data that we have to say, okay, this is where we need the interventions. The interventions have to be based on data. In my opinion, you all are public servants. You are stewards of public resources. The argument for you is how do we lift all boats in our communities? By targeting resources towards challenges that are most significant and most severe. And my sense is if you do that, you will also be addressing and remedying historical inequities that continue to plague, you know, everyone in our country everywhere, no matter jurisdiction or size, it's still there. That's what I think is the systemic response that also trickles down, if you will, in this example to the historic individual, how do we address root causes? I think it's that way.
Councilmember Dunbar, looks like you got your hand up still.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to follow up. I, I think that what, what you just explained is sort of an outward-facing, and how we, you discussed outward-facing and inward-facing policies and, and change. And I'm, I'm thinking specifically, and I know that you don't have a history with this, but I, and maybe I'm saying this as much for all of us to, to be aware of it. But I mean, we have seven lawsuits right now that are dealing with people who have experienced what they believe are inequities or differences in treatment or what have you. And that in, like, to me, that would be, if we didn't address that as part of this, it's almost leaving them behind and saying, well, from here forward, we're going to take care of all this. But all these things that happened over here that were terrible, that's just, you know, par for the course for before. So if you could speak to that, I would, I see you shaking.
Yeah, yeah. And I know y'all have a hard stop. I'm gonna be real quick with this answer. Yes, I did answer your question, thinking about much more of the systemic ways in which we eradicate and address history. When we think about internal, when we think about our internal policies and processes, which is much more in the operationalizing camp that I'm doing here, the work I'm doing with the city of San Antonio. The way it looks in some instances is we've got to transform our human resources practices. We also have to transform some of our evaluation practices. We also have to transform in the ways in which we report incidents, bias, all of those types of things are internal in nature and in the weeds of the work. It's all a part of operationalizing the work, though. So for example, one of the things that we have in human resources that we just made a recommendation for, that's coming out in their Equity Action Plan, is they themselves have to do a scan. They have to look at everything from where are we in terms of who we have? Yes, they have basic self opt-in demographic, race information, all that type of stuff. But we can also analyze where are the people? And what positions they have? And which departments do they make up? All of these types of things, which get to some of what you're talking about. There are some challenges with promotions, there are some challenges with hiring, there are some challenges in the ways in which we aren't addressing some of the racial challenges within our work group. We've got to also be real with reporting and having hard conversations and analyzing our levels of leadership. And that's why we are saying, hey, leadership also has to be trained too. Because there are a lot of folks that don't know that some of the behaviors that they continue to exude are behaviors that are racist or biased or any of these types of things. They don't know that. I'll give you an example. I had a worker call me and say, hey, I walked into my office, and this is what I was greeted with. A woman says to me, hey, you got a rapper's gold chain on today. Okay, that woman doesn't think that what she said to that black worker is something that may indicate some racism or some bias or anything. Nor does it rise to the level of what we would say from HR context would be actionable by way of some type of disciplinary action that would result in termination, right? So how do we get people to understand then that those things aren't acceptable and won't be tolerated in the workplace? We got to start somewhere. And I think today's conversation for you all is, how do we start? And then how do we start addressing that bit by bit, piece by piece, to where it can turn into something that is really bigger throughout the institution to where we don't have all this? And, and the economic imperative for equity is exactly what you just mentioned. Right? We do want people to be able to be safe and feel comfortable coming and being their wholesales in the workforce. But it's also expensive when people treat poorly in the workforce. Right? It's also expensive in contracting when we've got discriminatory complaints that are filed against us in contracting. So I hope that that gets to a little bit of it, but it's a very difficult question to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Butler, very much. We really appreciate your time. I know it's, the work that you've done in San Antonio has informed a lot of what our team has, our group has put together and, and requested funding for, and we will be reviewing that. I know Director Coleman has one more group of folks they'd like to bring in to talk about sort of the next steps here in Lansing, operationalizing what you've talked about in San Antonio. And we will be looking forward to that information and presentation. But I really appreciate you, you here, being here. I did write down your contact information. And if you could, I, I think I've got your presentation, but maybe send it, Director Coleman, if you could, please send those slides again for us to have as a group, that would be great.
And just know also that Jonathan will be presenting on the 22nd, as well as Dr. Elam will also be presenting on the 22nd, and that's an opportunity for the public to give us feedback on the plan that we've put together.
Okay, great. That, that is a different meeting. We're not, I'm not meeting on the 22nd. There's not another city council meeting I'm unaware of. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Jim, do you have anything to add? It looks like your hand might be up, but I think we might have moved on.
I know you moved on, but it makes me feel uncomfortable when you start to discuss litigation. We've got 31 lawsuits, not all based in civil rights or anything along that line, but they're all in preliminary stages. There's depositions going on. And I know I brief, we will brief counsel on all those lawsuits. I just want to, I just feel very uncomfortable discussing specific lawsuits or lawsuits of this nature at this point, if you don't mind.
In public meetings. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. I have had a conversation with the Budget Director and the Finance Director, and the presentations this evening are informational in nature and under no deadline. So I would ask that, absent objections from this council, and if I see you objecting, I'll turn your camera off. We're going to probably adjourn this committee and we'll come back in 10 minutes to, to start this, the city council meeting. Is there anyone, I was just joking about that, is there a strong objection to that pact? Okay, very good. Well, thank you, everyone who was here this evening. At 7:01, the committee, the hall is adjourned, and we will return at 7:11 to, to resume the city council meeting.